Welcome. This is the October tenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cam Benzie, Commissioner Conley, Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plord.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini.
Here.
And Mayor Campana.
Here. We have two Commissioners who are not here today. Could we have a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I would move that we excuse both Commissioner Conley and Commissioner Cam Benzie. I believe they are both out of the community this evening.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Support.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passes five zero. Okay, we have the agenda in front of us. Commissioner Plord?
Your Honor, I'd like to make an addition to the agenda. I'd like to add, under unfinished business, a discussion on ordinance number six fifty-four, chapter twenty-six, fire prevention and protection, Article Two, City of Marquette Fire Prevention Code, Sections twenty-six nineteen and twenty-six twenty.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Okay, we will make Marquette Junior Hockey three A, three B will be ordinance six five four. Now, we need a motion to adopt the amended agenda. Is there a motion? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we adopt the amended agenda.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Support.
Those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries five zero. We come to announcements. I have one announcement tonight. I am pleased to announce that Gary Simpson, our Chief Financial Office Officer, and his staff have been awarded an award. Comes from the Government Finance Officers Association, a national association. It says, "Your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending two thousand sixteen qualifies for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting." The certificate is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and reporting. So this is a good tribute to our financial department. They're doing a very well job, very good job, and they are recognized as such. So Gary, congratulations. Thank you for the job you do.
You also wore a tie. Your Honor, I'd like to make a comment.
Commissioner Plord, go ahead.
I'd also like to point out that this commendation came from people who are in the business. So there's really no better recognition than from, to get recognition like this from your peers. They know, they know the job you did, and they know what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Next, we move to presentations. We have one presentation tonight. That would be, and this is a person we should all treat very nicely, by the way, the Local Officers Compensation Commission, Susan Tollison. Susan, to my right, please.
Thank you. And I am Susan Tollison from the Local Officers Compensation Committee. Want to give you a little background. The state law mandates that this group meet once every two years, in odd-numbered years. So we did meet this year. Members of the commission are Suzanne Bowers, Jason Sides, Cameron House, Anthony Guerindelli, James Madison, and myself, and Wendy Larson is our staff liaison. The purpose and goal of the committee is establish pursuant to state law, Home Rule, City Act, Act two seventy-nine, along with the Chapter one seventy-one of the city code, established by the city commission. There are seven members who serve seven-year terms, expiring August first, for the purpose of determining the salaries of elected city officials, for the city commission, the mayor, the Board of Light and Power, and the Board of Light and Power Chair. Accomplishments for this past year. Prior to the LOCC meeting, the group's staff liaison polled comparable communities and presented our committee with a spreadsheet outlining the salaries of other municipalities' elected leaders. The Board of Light and Power staff obtained comparable compensation from other municipality-owned electrical officials in Michigan. This was also shared with the LOCC. The group met on August seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, and conducted all business necessary. By unanimous votes, the group decided the following for the elected official salaries: the city commission, the mayor, the BLP, and the BLP Board Chair. City commissioner's compensation was increased two hundred dollars with an annual salary of seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Mayor's compensation was increased three hundred dollars with an annual salary of ten thousand five hundred. The Board of Light and Power remained at an annual salary of four thousand, and the Board of Light and Power Chair remained at an annual salary of four thousand five hundred. Goals for the upcoming year. By state law, the group is not allowed to meet until two thousand nineteen. Our overall goal is to have the one current vacancy on the LOCC filled. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, anyone? No, it's pretty straightforward, Susan. We thank you. You got something, Commissioner?
I knew you had time limits about meeting, but I didn't realize that you are not permitted to meet until two thousand nineteen. Not that we want you to meet necessarily, but I didn't realize that the law was that restrictive or prohibitive in that way. Any recommendations to us about types of people or anything of that nature we should look forward to appoint to the commission or the board?
Like I used to say when I was looking for student workers, if they have a heartbeat and they can breathe, you know, if they have an interest, you know, I would encourage anybody to be on one of the boards and just serve and learn about, a little more about the city and about each other. So I'm looking forward to seeing some applicants.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you having me here.
Thank you.
Next, we move to our first public comment of the evening. Public comment, so when citizens may address the commission, or they may reserve time to speak on items coming up in our meeting. We will give you three minutes. We need name, address, city or township. We're going to open public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this point?
Anybody want to give me the mic? Got it. Is it? It's close out there. Is it good?
Yes, it is. Oops. Thank you. We're good, thanks. Aaron Andrews, fifteen hundred Norway Avenue, Marquette. I was wanting to draw your attention to the, I know the DDA wants to improve sidewalk sales within the downtown development area, and I don't have any problem with sidewalk sales. However, when you're trying to navigate the sidewalks in the wheelchair, it's quite difficult. And I noticed that in the budget, there's only five hundred and six thousand dollars in the capital improvements for sidewalks. And the, in the appendixy of the master plan, it talks about the accessibility of Marquette, wanting it to be a more walkable, sustainable city, and the fact that, okay, we don't see a lot of disabled people moving around or getting in wheelchairs, frankly, because it's so hard to navigate around the city with all the different sidewalks, and of course, snow and whatnot. So I guess my question is, do we, what do we want to do? Do we want to make it more accessible, or do we want to allow for individuals to have more sales on the sidewalk? I don't care which. I would just like a disabled person's position to be heard and to be recognized. As we say we want to do one thing, but yet, in trying to do one thing, we end up trying to do the opposite by increasing sidewalk sales. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to address the commission?
Hello, my name is Matt Luttenberger, fourteen oh six, Garfield Ave, here in Marquette, Michigan. I, too, would like to second that. There's tough times, even just walking around with, holding a hand of a child. There's times during the DDA district that it's somewhat difficult with all the chairs and all the tables and all the other things that are going on. But by all means, encourage it all. If one solution would be, and I'll try to be quick here, one solution would be to mark off the city, the DDA, either parking spots or the road itself, and make people drive around it. We're getting used to the whole traffic jams. So that's, okay, that's not what I came up here for. I came up here to discuss my, I have no problem correcting myself when I'm, when I make a mistake. And my mistake was suggesting that Presque Isle was a good spot for the dark sky park. I did a professional assessment. I took Mr. Conley's advice and went up to Little Presque first for a dark sky base photo. I was able to see the Milky Way. I was able to see a lot of the Messier objects very clearly, and capture both Neptune and Mars really clean. Went down to the park, and at the break wall side of things, there's an ambient light that is strong enough to wipe out most of those Messier objects. And when I say Messier objects, I mean the small galaxies, the small things that you put a telescope to and you just say, "Stay on that for thirty-five minutes. Let me look at that." Those kinds of things are what make a dark sky park. So please don't put it out there as, "This is our dark sky park. We will probably be laughed at." At the same time, that's only because I've tried. And I went over to the Presque Isle, the other side, the pavilion side, and I literally got a portrait without any other settings. I hit the button, I said, "Okay, keep it open," like I did on Little Presque, and I was able to see facial features. I mean, bearded facial features. That's a lot of light. Again, it's all ambient. You can't shut it down. It's from the power plant, it's from the streetlights, it's from all of the things that we treat Presque Isle as legit. And this is why we go there. This is what we do. We go and we spend time in the parks and the parking lots. All of that, though, takes up ambient light, and it distracts from the shot. So I ended up going to Hurley Field, or the soccer fields in the BMX park. That has a lot darker sky than just down at Presque Isle. And with the drive down to Presque Isle, granted, I didn't see the northern lights because that's usually at treetop level, but again, they weren't out that night. The drive to Presque Isle is tedious, the light isn't very valid. Please think of changing, now that it's under the October agreement, please think of changing the location for the night sky park. You could turn off two parking lights in Hurley Park, not Hurley, what's, the ones on the north field, Kaufman, or Kaufman Complex, thank you. Turn off two of those parking lights, and you'll have a better dark sky park than you do at Presque Isle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Jeff Verro, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on item seven. These are my opinions. September twenty-fifth, Mr. Plord said, quote, "It's very interesting, Mr. Verroto, that you can agree you see into the future. I'm curious as to how you acquired that uh..." But I'll take your word for it. "You've already proven that you know fools better than anyone else, and we all know what that takes. I'm constantly impressed at how well-versed you are in stupidity, and I'm sure you'll continue to impress me further," end quote. As for Mr. Plord's curiosity as how to, I acquired that uh, you know, assuming my skill to see into the future, I'd stated mere minutes earlier that, quote, "I have documented my ability to see into the future, not because I have psychic powers, but because I've studied urban growth since college and its implications across dozens of communities," end quote. Review what was said versus his reply. He wasn't listening. Again, he provided no examples of what upset him, so this unhealthy cycle continues on which we get nowhere. To get anywhere, he needs to provide specifics. That's what differentiates his attack from my comments. In fact, the witness advised me to file an ethics complaint. The attorney claimed that I treat officials the same way, which is untrue. I don't blindly attack others without first expressing the details. What does claiming that I know fools better than anyone else or am well-versed in stupidity accomplish? Actually, I'm too well-versed in stupidity, having so compellingly documented it here for twenty years. I show enough respect to explain why, but simply don't receive that respect in return, so we get nowhere. Excessive cutting occurred near Father Marquette Park. This after your urge not to whittle away at our natural nooks and crannies. I was proactive enough to check into this ahead of time and was assured by the beautification director that no such cutting would occur. Someone without the requested due public process cut most of the vegetation away from the outcropping, as well as the majority of an island of trees just north, supposedly the only way to achieve the required five percent slope for the ramp. I'm as ADA-conscious as anyone and approve and so, but not at the expense of the resource. September twenty-fifth, all present members neglected to respond to our concerns about the homeless situation and suicide, items that affect most everyone. How I pronounced flounders and whether I know fools is evidently more important to them. Through their inaction, they've lowered the morale of our police and city staff who must clean up after them. You've made us look like a little San Francisco. Another man mentioned your failure to address his politely-stated concerns about suicide for two years. It's impossible to imagine that none of these seven are, not, that none of these seven are impacted by homelessness or suicide. And even if they have been, to not address misfortunes that affect the public at large, that's excusable. No shame on you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, here in Malenkin and eight Marquette Drive, here in the city of Marquette. What a fabulous community we're living in. All the roads are getting kind of fixed up. As of today, you can kind of get from here to there, kind of, sort of, and hopefully at the end of the month, we'll be, we'll get there from here to there and there from here. And I don't know how many communities of our size are approaching to the roundabouts that we are acquiring in our community, but I think we'll be, probably will be the leaders in that format. I'm sure that the web designers who have designed your webpage are much, much smarter than I am, but I'm having a dickens of a time navigating that website to get information to the minutes, to the city site, to the property sites, which were really easy before. The front page used to have just a calendar, events that all, whether it was my housing commission, or whether it was Board of Light and Power, it was all on the front page. Now you have to kind of go and look for it really deeply. And I was kind of being curious to see where the board members are listed. I could not find any of the board members unless I went to our housing commission's site, and then I could visit who we have on our board, but it's much more challenging. And if it's there, I did not find it all, and perhaps somebody can send me an email on how to be more user-friendly, because I think I can follow a webpage pretty well, but I, I've been struggling, and I've talked to a couple other people, and they've been struggling with that new version. And I'm sure the gentleman, or the company, or the ladies who designed it thought it was the greatest thing since a slice of cheese, but it is somewhat encumbranceome to me as a user. And perhaps I'm used to more of the old system, and maybe it's my fault, but if there's a better way to get to that, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Fred Stonehouse, eight seven five, Oriana Drive, Marquette. A procedural comment. It used to be an unwritten rule on the commission that you never added an agenda item that had any controversial aspects attached to it. Because by adding that item, you have deprived the public of their right to come forward and talk about that item and discuss it. So when you add an item, add an agenda meeting, that is not simply procedural cleanup of something, it really does not speak well for this commission. And I urge you that if, especially the fire code issue, which we know is highly contentious within the community. So I would urge that if that is the purpose of the added agenda item, and if there's any vote taken or contemplated being taken, that it would be really very unfair to the citizens of this community to have it presented in that manner. That the reason we have an agenda is for the public to be notified of what this commission is doing. And when you add an item during a meeting or prior to a meeting, you deprive the public of that right to comment, that right to know of what this commission is doing. So as, again, all I know is what was stated during the conference, it may be, or during the request, it may be nothing more than a very pass-through comment, but if it's contemplated a vote being taken or any decision being made, I would urge you, please, not to do so, especially considering you have two commissioners missing, you have a short commission as it is, that please, full commission, full knowledge, full warning on whatever items you choose to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, we do not respond, Mr. Stonehouse, but what we're doing tonight is we're just going to bring it, we're going to vote on whether we're going to bring it to our next meeting for a public hearing. At the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing, we'll have discussion, then we'll vote yes or no to adopt it. Yes?
I was, oh, I'm sorry.
Let's clarify this. You have, you want to add to that?
Thank you for the clarification, but I would still urge that even that procedural motion should have been on the agenda and properly vetted to the public. And it certainly is not. And that becomes my procedural concern as to how commissions publicly operate. So my rights should have been on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, it doesn't belong to be added at the last minute. If that delays any adaption or any further motion, so be it. That time is there, but do it correctly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
On that note, may I speak on that item, please? I forgot to mention it. No.
You'll get three minutes. You can do it in the second public comment.
Well, no, that's kind of pointless, but okay.
Anyone else?
He was just saying he wanted to speak on that, but I don't want to come up. No. No, not, no. What item?
Three B, please. The one you just added. Thank you. Thank you.
We will do that. Does anyone else wish to address the commission at this point? Anyone else? See none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. Commissioners, we have a motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Carries five zero. We have two items under unfinished business tonight. The first item is the Marquette Junior Hockey Corporation, the concession lease agreement. City Clerk, could we have the background to that, please?
Thank you, sir. Marquette Junior Hockey Corporation has requested the city commission consider leasing the concession area of Lakeview Arena. MJHC operated the concession area during the two thousand sixteen-seventeen ice season. Staff has worked with the city attorney and MJHC to draft the lease agreement. The agreement term is six months, beginning October first, two thousand seventeen, through March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. The monthly payment during operation shall be seven hundred and twenty dollars. It should be noted that there are specific hours, which MJHC would have exclusive rights to concession in the building. Outside of these hours, other arrangements with other entities are possible. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the commission's September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, meeting, and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the October tenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting. Fiscal effect, the Lakeview Arena Fund will receive four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars in revenue for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with the Marquette Junior Hockey Corporation for concession space at Lakeview Arena, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, we have a motion. Commissioner Baldini?
I would move that we approve the lease agreement with the Marquette Junior Hockey Corporation for concession space at Lakeview Arena. Authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plord?
I second.
Any comments, Commissioner Baldini?
Just a very couple of brief comments. One, appreciate that they're prepared to take this responsibility on. It's not easy, okay? And if they can make some additional funds to continue to support this junior hockey program, so be it, which is important to this community, it's for, it's for the young people. And so, one, thank you for them for taking it on, and I don't think the, the lease, the monthly lease is that onerous, and, because there is always equipment, so I think it's a good, a good procedure.
Thank you. Commissioner Plord?
Yeah, simply because they're looking to do it again this year shows that they had a good experience last year, and that's good for us. So I like, I like the agreement.
Okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Carries five zero. Next item is the ordinance six five four. Commissioner Plord?
Your Honor, I'd like to move to rescind the motion adopted at the June twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, meeting, to postpone consideration of proposed ordinance number six fifty-four for six months.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I do not see a second. Fire code.
Bring it back for public hearing at our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Frazier. So it's moved to second that we rescind the motion adopted at the June twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, meeting, to postpone consideration of proposed ordinance six five four for six months. Discussion. Commissioner Plord?
Thank you, Your Honor. What?
Oh, yes. He did that. Three B, yes, you did. Matt?
Mr. Luttenberger?
Thank you. Sorry for all the confusion, folks. I, Matt Luttenberger, fourteen oh six, Garfield Ave, here in Marquette. I'm more or less curious what that code was, but since we're rescinding the, the vote for six months, those six months were valid for preparations. A lot of these that you're going to be discussing are very minutia-oriented. What does this house do? What does that other house do? What is this new development going to have to pertain to? So the due diligence that is required for an ordinance such as this is what I was kind of promoting. The other thought is, as Mr. Stonehouse said, this is the seventh agenda amendment that you've done this year. It becomes very common for you guys to, to say, "Oh, well, we forgot about this, let's add this."
Point of order, Your Honor.
I'm sorry, did I?
Luttenberger expressed an opportunity to talk about the ordinance itself, not about amending the, or amending the agenda.
I'm curious what I am being restricted from speaking about. If my time could stop, I would like to.
Yeah, you'll get your time. Commissioner Plord is correct. It's, the motion is to rescind the previous motion.
Which was related to ordinance six five four, which is related to the timing of bringing that back into the discussion?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. So ordinance six five four is the important, and you are...
Whether you want to bring it back or not.
Moving it back to delaying it, or bringing it forward to the next...
Bring it up for discussion and possible, and vote on October thirtieth, which is our next meeting.
Okay. So right now, the motion is only to present this in October thirtieth and not future in the six months delay that you approved last time?
Correct.
Okay. I would like the six-month delay because there's a lot of due diligence that is needed for the discussion that you are pushing forward. I don't understand why I was pointing. I don't understand why I was pointed ordered. I am discussing the ordinance that you are discussing, and the timing of which you present that to the public. So my concern is that the due diligence that the public needs to put in forth is being shortened because you've restricted your actual vote to delay the vote. So now that you're here to shorten the actual time we as a public have to get ready for this vote, is what I am actually discussing right now. I would like you to give us as much time as possible for us to get our information together for you when you make this vote. And 30 days does not seem like enough. 15 days at this point does not seem like enough. It would be nice if the six-month discussion and decision that you made last time holds true, because there is, as far as I can hear, no reason to hurry this up. I guess I would like to see the delay stay, please.
Okay, thank you. Let it be known that our next meeting, I think, is three weeks away. It's one of those months where you have a three-week period.
Do we remind people that what we, because what I understand his motion is, is to... Your motion is not the substance tonight. The motion is to take off the table a postponement that we made three months ago.
That's correct.
What we did is, three months ago, we voted to postpone until six months, which is December something. Don't hold me to the date. And so, and I voted for that proposal, six months. And so what is on the table this evening is a motion to add it, in effect, to the October 30th agenda, and in effect, rescind our postponement motion.
What we're doing now is rescinding...
No, what's on the table is a motion to rescind the previously adopted motion in June. That's all that's on the table.
That's all that's on the table.
Yeah. At this point.
And you should be, I think you need to be aware that the, there was a public hearing on this. Proposed, this is a proposed ordinance, it's not the ordinance. A proposed ordinance, there was a public hearing on it in June. The commission wanted to delay the decision on it for six months so they could consider it. And now, from the motion I just heard, you're asking to rescind that motion. And that's what's on the floor right now. Okay.
Okay, we're back to Commissioner Plard.
Thank you. Just as a, just of clarification, Mr. Luttenberger, I call for a point of order because you began to go into talking about adding things to the agenda, and got off track on this particular issue, which is what, why you were given public comment in the first place. Granted, maybe in your mind, it's the same, but in my mind, it's not. And that's why I called a point of order. Since you got back to talking about the ordinance, not a problem. I appreciate your comments about this, and I appreciate Mr. Stonehouse's comments. In Mr. Stonehouse's comments, there are a lot, there's a lot of wisdom in what he says. However, in this particular situation, as City Attorney Keefe has already mentioned, this came up four months ago. We've had two public hearings on it already. We're going to give an opportunity for people to continue to comment, because we're not going to bring it up for a vote tonight. It's not the intention. I still have three more weeks, but I'm concerned about this right now, because the city of Marquette's liability is in jeopardy here. We are going to be liable, it's become clear through the public hearings, to me, that we have some developers in the area that simply will do the absolute minimum that they have to do by law, and to the, in my opinion personally, this is my opinion, to the detriment of public safety. In other words, putting some lives in danger. And I can't go with that any longer. We need to have an ordinance in place, and that's why I want to bring the discussion up a lot sooner. I feel personally that we've waited too long already. People have had plenty of time to discuss this. People, there have been two public hearings already on it. People have been there, they've discussed it, we've discussed it. We've looked at the proposal for the International Fire Commission, which is a book about three inches thick. We've looked at the proposal for the National Fire Prevention Association, which is about three inches thick as well. And to me, it's time to move forward on this issue. We cannot put it off any longer. Anybody else has an opportunity or wants an opportunity to have discussion on this? We, I do intend to facilitate or help having that happen. But this particular motion, as I mentioned, or as the mayor mentioned, is simply to rescind the original motion to wait until December to get this subject done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, anything?
No comment.
Comments anywhere else, Commissioner Baldini?
Question. So if we're rescinding it, when are we doing it?
The plan is, he's going to make a motion. If we, we're going to vote on it, and then we, next step is, we make a motion to...
Well, I mean, Commissioner Plard discussed some of the substance, and I was, I'm prepared to discuss it, but I was, it's not the procedural thing, because what we're doing here is taking it off of the, we're saying, we're not going to wait until December, we're going to wait until now. I'm prepared to discuss the substance of it, but that's not what the motion is, and we're not, that's not what it's doing. I'm going to vote no on the motion. We gave ourselves six months. I still think there is some consideration. There is no appeals process. I, tonight, we heard from the public saying that the city decided on sidewalk sales in order to circumvent some of our own rules. We identified rules that people wanted to put tables and chairs downtown, which this summer they did. So the DDA said, aha, we'll have sidewalk sales from Wednesday to Sunday for the rest of the summer, in effect, circumventing. And we all sort of turned our head because we sort of wanted to make it work. Thank you. And that's the problem we're faced with, is we have some very restrictive procedures. We don't have a good review policy or an appeals process. If you don't like your taxes, you can have a process of repealing them. If you don't like what's zoning, we have an appeals board. We have the fire department establishing this code as being the procedure for the city. They are in effect going to be in charge of what happens in this city in terms of expansion. There's no appeal, okay? I think, I do not reject or have opposition or to some of the safety codes. I don't believe we are liable. There's still a Michigan construction code that we have to respond to, and a lot of people in Michigan use that. You're not liable. So, but I do think we should have some process where if a builder says, I believe I can do this, just as effective and plus protecting what rules we have, then I think we should have some way for that person to have some hearing. And right now, we're saying that when this code is in, the fire department has absolute authority. There is no repeal. There is nothing to look at. I would like to look at some appeal. People, I believe, have that option, or have that right in this community, or any community. So, but what we're dealing with is, and I would hope that in the next three months, we could probably find some appeal. I don't believe we're exposed to any liability in that context. As cities, we're always exposed to liability. It's one of those perpetual things. But that's my position, and I voted to extend it before because I wanted more information. So the question before us is, do we do it or don't we do it in terms of that context, not the substance, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, Tom, stole a lot of the things that I would have said as to, I've talked to a lot of the community, and actually, the few comments that I did have from people that do deal in the area of development, not necessarily builders, people that deal with economic development, had the concern of the appeal process, the concept of such. And I'm going to stick with what I always do when we add something to the agenda that is not procedural. I did the same thing with eminent domain, and every time, I don't think it's appropriate to add something to the agenda, especially at this kind of moment when this has been heated. Two, we're missing two commissioners. One, who did vote to postpone it till December, which was Commissioner Cam Benzi. So for that reason, those two reasons alone, I'll be voting no. Oh, I do have one further question. If it is brought up in October, we do add it to the agenda, is that the first read?
This, if we accept it tonight, this would be the first read, am I not correct? I think public hearing would be October 30th, second read.
So we're going to move this up by three months if we say yes to this, not an extra?
Correct.
Okay.
City manager, you had something?
No, I was just going to answer your question.
Commissioner Plard, you had something? I don't think that we're moving, that we're moving too fast on this. I just feel that at some point, we have to adopt the code. You know, we do not at present have a fire code in the city. I understand there's concerns about economic development. We never want a stymie economic development. I just don't think that'll really happen. I just, I think it's important that we have a fire code in effect going forward. We're going to vote on it, we're going to have it, we're going to do this in December or January anyway, so why not do it at the end of this month? So I will probably vote for it. Any other discussion? Any other discussions? Okay, the question is, should we rescind the motion adopted at the June 26, 2017 meeting, to postpone consideration of proposed ordinance 654 for six months? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Your honor, the motion fails. It requires a majority of the membership, so it requires...
It's a 3-2 vote, it does not pass.
Right.
Okay. Did you get that? It needs a two-thirds majority. We don't have enough. Okay, next we move to new business. We have four items on new business tonight. First, first item is Mayor Campana and Commissioner Frazier travel reimbursement. City Clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Dave Campana and Commissioner Pete Frazier attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held in Holland, Michigan, September 12th through the 15th of 2017. The following checks will be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Mayor Dave Campana, check number 76250, $181.31. Commissioner Pete Frazier, check number 76326, $92. Fiscal effect, total travel costs are $273.31. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2017 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Mayor Campana in the amount of $181.31, and Commissioner Frazier in the amount of $92 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. My, I'm just going to say myself and Commissioner Frazier will abstain from this voting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the travel reimbursement for Mayor Campana in the amount of $181.31, and Commissioner Frazier in the amount of $92 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Second. Commissioner Plard?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
See none? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed? Those abstaining, please say yes. Yes? Okay. That passes 3-0 with two abstentions. Next item is Commissioner Cam Benzi travel reimbursement. City Clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sarah Cam Benzi attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held in Holland, Michigan, September 12th through the 15th, 2017. The following check will be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Sarah Cam Benzi, check number 76337, $80. Fiscal effect, total travel costs are $80. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2017 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Cam Benzi in the amount of $80 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, a motion? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Cam Benzi in the amount of $80 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Second. Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Discussion, any? See none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries five zero. Next we move to long-term disability insurance. City Clerk, if we could.
Thank you, sir. Department heads and middle managers at the city do not currently have any income protection if they become disabled. The city's current group Long-Term Disability Insurance, LTD, covers only union employees who switched to a paid time-off system called Benefit Time when it was offered many years ago. LTD coverage provides a benefit equal to 60% of an employee's basic monthly earnings, up to a maximum of $4,000 per month after a 90-day elimination period. Coverage continues until the employee reaches social security normal retirement age or recovers from the disability. The city received a quote from our current LTD and life insurance carrier, Lincoln Financial Group, to add LTD for all management employees. The carrier will add the management employees who work at least 37.5 hours a week to our group plan for a rate of 58 cents per $100 of annual earnings. This is the same rate we pay now for the covered union employees. By adding this coverage, we will be able to offer some income protection to those management employees who are not currently eligible for disability income protection through LTD coverage or through a disability retirement. Fiscal effect, the quote to cover all full-time management employees who work at least 37.5 hours a week is $21,619 for the year. This rate is guaranteed through September 1, 2018. This amount is included in the current year's budget. Recommendation, approve the addition of long-term disability coverage for all full-time middle managers and department heads effective October 1, 2017. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we approve the addition of long-term disability coverage for all full-time middle managers and department heads effective October 1, 2017.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion, Commissioner Plard?
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, this is a very small benefit that will help to keep excellent department heads and middle managers. It's so important to have this benefit, and the cost is really very, very minimal. So it's something we do need to add to our repertoire.
Commissioner Baldini?
I just have a comment also. I agree with Commissioner Plard that it's insignificant, but when somebody gets disabled, it's very, very significant, and it has an impact really on an entire staff. And so I'm pleased to see that we've now put this in for the middle management people, so...
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed? That carries five zero. Our last item under new business is a request for license to use city property adjacent to 715 North Fourth Street. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, sir. The owners of property at 715 North Fourth Street have requested a license for the use of city property adjacent to their parcel for continued use of a fence in this location. Fiscal effect, the applicant has requested a waiver of the $100 per year fee for the grant of license. Recommendation, approve the request for a license, direct the city attorney to prepare a license for use of the city property shown in attachment Exhibit A, and consider the request to waive the fee. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Veretil, you wanted to speak to this item?
Frank J. Veretil, these are my opinions. What's odd is that you've provided such a clear description and depictions in tonight's supplement for a simple item that doesn't impact the community at large, although it could set a precedent. Yet for more impactful projects, you often don't provide adequate descriptions and illustrations. However, on the agenda itself, under new business, this item is entitled to request for license to use city property adjacent to 715 North Fourth Street. There's no mention of a fence until we study the supplement. Please provide an adequate title on the agenda itself. Whether the permit is granted isn't consequential to most of us, although the terrace and the width between the sidewalk and the fence are both unusually narrow there. The residents in the area will provide better opinions on that aspect, and if none oppose, you have your answer. One question is whether the appearance of this item on tonight's agenda has anything to do with the reconstruction of Harrison Street. You had that pavement torn up for many months, easily weeks longer than necessary. Rome was built faster. Unless you know people on that street like I do, you have no idea of the extent that you've injured those residents with lack of use, dust, noise, exhaust, and the... the.
Excuse me, excuse me. Commissioner Plard, yes?
Public comment for this item is supposed to be specifically about the fence, not about the reconstruction of Harrison Street.
How do you know that when the suite's been torn up all those years?
Okay, let's, let's stick to the subject at hand, okay? Mr. Verito, you can do that? Stick to the subject matter at hand.
I'm trying to help people. But who incidentally is pictured in the adjusted image for this item that appears on the very last page on tonight's packet? Now, thank you for providing such pleasant supplements for enjoyment and for saving the best for last. Now, I guess another question is, are you running this meeting or is Mr. Plard running it?
Okay, now we need a motion. Commissioner Baldini?
I move that we approve the request for a license, direct the city attorney to prepare a license for the use of the city property shown in the attachment Exhibit A, and waive the, the, the fee for the property.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? None? Commissioner Frazier, none? Commissioner Plard?
Yeah, I went and took a look at the fence after I got the, the notice in, in the packet. And, yeah, it is on the city right away. It's an obnoxious, unobnoxious fence. It's off of the sidewalk. It's a little close. A lot of people would consider it a little close, but it's not gonna be an issue whatsoever. And it has absolutely nothing to do with the reconstruction of Harrison Street.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries 5-0. Now we come to our last public comment of the evening. Again, a chance to address the commissioners. I'm gonna open public comment. You have three minutes. Name, address, city or township. Anybody wish to address the commission at this point?
Hello, Matt Lutemberger, 1406 Garfield Ave here in Marquette. I don't know where to start because I'm really afraid to get cut off. Because this whole moving agenda items around, like I was saying, this is the seventh time you've done it this year. This is the second time I've been called out on a point of order in my last two presentations by the same gentleman. And no offense, Mr. Plard, but this is my time. Three minutes. You have all the time in the world to rebut me after I sit down. Please, I'm not looking to get into a personal argument back and forth. These are professional opinions. I'm trying to express them, and sometimes they take a lot of time to get back to a point. I have a, I have two minutes left. I came up earlier to talk about the BOT Center earlier today at the work session. Appreciate the fact that we got an update. Thank you very much. I made my point known that I think an adventure center could be a better use for that area. At the same time, only because we have so many more condos that have been set up in the last five years. We have so many more city parks available or places that we can do this coming up. The pier going into Founder's Landing would be a great spot for this whole eco-center. At the same time, it's a $90 million project. I mean, that's $90 million that they look forward to getting grants for. I, I wonder how long does the city then lease this to them? Does Phase 1 require then that we guarantee Phase 7? I, I'm curious as to, I don't dislike the project. I really do enjoy the project. I also think it's a lot of work for something that still has a lot of questions regarding the bottom lands. Or not just bottom lands, but just usage in general. They're not using the, I'm getting out of this point. All right. So I've got a minute left. I bring this up because tomorrow you're gonna have a work session with the Board of Light and Power, and I look forward to speaking with you about that tomorrow. My point tonight is to ask you to consider what changes could be made to the city charter to allow for a renewable energy company to provide electricity for minor uses, such as your toilets or your park benches or put up areas that you can recharge batteries on the bike path. Right now, with your agreement with Johnson Controls and the agreement with the Board of Light and Power, any presentation that suggests new electricity rate or new electricity usage would go against the, I'd say, bottom bar of what Johnson Controls are just trying to get to. So anytime we add electricity usage, we are restricting your agreement with them. I would like to know what you can do about opening up the renewable energy resources we have in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. September 25, the chair caught me on a technicality when he twice reminded us that the south side development is not Flounder's Landing, but Founder's Landing. The technicality was that he caught me not being original. I usually make up my own names. Other residents deserve credit for deriving at the most perfect name we've ever seen for a development. Flounder means, in part, to stumble, to struggle, to move or obtain footing, to proceed clumsily, and to muddle on from blunder to blunder. Is that on target or what? Angry citizens began using Flounders years ago when, after 10 years of planning and floundering, residents began to realize they'd been lied to, specifically those whose promised views of the lake became blocked by the ugly rears of townhouses that were haphazardly planned in the 11th hour without considering years of public input or adjacent land uses, hence the blocked roundabout view, a major lost opportunity. Prior to that, we lost a grant for two pavilions at Flounders because the three members who remained after the recall were too taxed to simply submit a grant app in time. More recently, board members approved an 85% private boathouse in the woods just south of the path to Lake Superior in an act so stupid their own cohorts threatened to sue them. They rescinded their error like the cowards they were. A second site that I recommended was then approved, but the footprint in impervious areas covered much more public shoreline. Very sneaky, but they approved it anyway. Thankfully, people were smart enough not to donate. Even after all this floundering, we look forward to the promised retail residential cluster intended to provide a smooth transition between the lake and downtown. But even that became a lie, eerily similar to Lakeshore Site, at which Phase 1 was to include the renovation of the historic structures with shops, galleries, and loft apartments. What we see at each site now is a commission lie. We ought to call Lakeshore Site Flounders North to match this board's mentality at Flounder South. Even if the projects win awards, the lies can never be erased. Add Lighthouse Park to your list of lies. Another concern is whether the chair actually thought I accidentally mispronounced Flounders. Please, Chairman, tell us, you didn't really think that I've inadvertently been mispronouncing Flounders this whole time? We may never find out, but if so, this would be indicative of how out of touch he is. He doesn't get it, and he hasn't gotten it for six years. And why is how I pronounce Flounders more important than our other stated concerns like homelessness and suicide? While you floundered in here, we've had a stabbing at the shelter, another one nearby, an alleged assault along our east-west trail, and untold messes to clean up. You know, add that to a well-publicized suicide. You've helped encourage this homeless problem through your inaction, and you're being told publicly again that a lot of us don't like it.
Anyone else?
Again, good evening. Yorma Lankin, 8 Market Drive here in the city of Marquette. Lot of ways I could go on that one, but I'll just leave it alone. Thank you for everything you do. It's a thankless job. You do the best you can. There's a lot of moving parts in the city of Marquette, whether it's the infrastructure, water, sewer, streets, lights, everything. As an overall, you and your managers and people in charge do a fabulous job in our community. I've been building and still continue building, working in our community for the past 43 years. I do agree with Mr. Baldini. The restrictions have become more and more restrictive. And we used to pay $25 or $20 for a zoning permit. Now it's $1,000. We have no really appeal process on that. Now, the fire code, there needs to be an appeal process when it becomes so restrictive in any community. You have to have, it's not a completely black and white scenario. There has to be an appeal process, and I do agree with Mr. Baldini that we are in a democratic system here. We're not in a dictatorial system, so there are many ways to do things. And so I'm glad that that won't fail this evening to give people a chance to speak up. As I read in the paper, one of the commissioners or a couple of the commissioners even at the last work session said, well, we're even more confused now than we were before. And so the commissioners all have a same grasp on what is being said or what the left hand is doing with the right hand. So please do, do diligence, and I'm glad that you still have the remainder of three months to look into making it good for everybody. And it's not a detriment to the community to give it time. It will be a detriment to the community if you make it shorter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Stonehouse, 875 Orianna Drive, Marquette. Thank you for putting on the work session earlier, earlier today. I think it was most useful for everybody, not only for the commission, but for the public, and I think for the guys and gals from the BOT too. Interesting project. Hope we can move forward and we'll see how it all comes together. It's gonna, it's certainly one step in a very long journey. Another point that I, I think plays into a little bit of what Marquette is and how we come together. I had a chance today to spend the, literally the entire day with a couple of agents for a cruise ship line. They'll be coming in the Marquette. The cruise ship will be stopping in port twice this coming summer. And these agents travel throughout the Great Lakes, and they arrange the excursions that may occur shoreside. They look at cities, look at communities that they look at going into. And they were just staggered by the city. They were staggered by how good Matson Park was, the facilities that are there. They were staggered by looking. And I took them on a pretty good tour through the city, but to understand what's happening and how the city has made that transition from being an old industrial city to really the 21st century community that we are today. And the Smart Zone going on and the innovation that's going on within the city, the projects being built, it literally is, is one of a kind in the Great Lakes. And they are absolutely looking forward to getting up here, setting up some of the excursions that they will be doing. Some of them are those that have never been done anywhere else. And I can't tell you what they are now. That's for them to do as they put them together. But they literally will be one of a kind, and certainly very reflective of Marquette, our city, our community, and what we do. And that's a real piece of good news for us because having a ship in port doesn't contribute a lot of money to the community, but it sure looks good sitting there. And it sure dures people down that want to just look at it and see it. And it's one of those feel-good, happy moments. So I wanted to leave you with that. And thank you again for the good work that you do. We may not always agree, but we certainly know where we want to go and how we want to get there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission at this time? Anyone? Seeing none, we're gonna close public comment. We're gonna move to comments from the commission. We'll start, Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I hope everybody's enjoyed our, our summer and fall we've had lately. The initial weather here in September and October, we had in August, which is unusual. But anyways, nice having a couple of nice days in summer. I think fall's gonna come back sooner or later, but hopefully it doesn't. And, you know, we're busy putting, helping put boats away, so just to be cautious, people, just look out. There's a lot of activity going on in the harbor with boats transferring in and out. Just beware of that when you're down there. Just don't, there's a lot of traffic going on with that stuff. Just, people are trying to move stuff around and push stuff away because they think it's time for fall, you know, but it's been beautiful summer, so. And, you know, the person about sidewalks, it's interesting comment because I have friends, one of the business on Third Street, and they, they put their sidewalk sales out just very near to the building, within their footprint. Don't put them out in the way of things. So that's a good comment, you know, and they've, they've said, well, we can't do this, but it's a good way to look at it. Never thought about that. It's a good way to look at it. Maybe the cruise ship that comes in can dock at the ORDOC and they, or the, the, the old ORDOC. Be a great place for them. And, you know, so I was thinking, but the, and I'll do my research on the codes because I did great research on the energy thing and then the garbage thing, the research thing. It gives us more time to do research and it'd be good for everybody to get research on. I think it's all about fire safety more than trying to build, building codes over rule everything. So it's more about protecting the people's house, people's community, and protecting the fire department, that's all.
Thank you. Mayor Pearl Tim Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last Saturday, the fire department has a Fire Prevention Week kickoff parade and stag, stag, static display scheduled for last Saturday. And there was a rain date. The rain date is this Saturday. So I just want to remind people that the static display will be this Saturday, and it'll be held at 11:00 a.m. on the 14th now, and on Bluff Street directly behind Washington Street at Harlow Park. So just a reminder on that one, okay? Secondly, the Board of Light and Power was mentioned that we're meeting with them tomorrow. No, we're meeting in a work session with the Board of Light and Power next week, okay? I also attended, well, the commission attended the, the meeting today with the, the folks who are looking at the ORDOC. And sitting there, I was reminded, and I think many of us are reminded, what Matson Park once looked like. And it took years to put that into the condition and the shape that it's in and what's being done and how it's being utilized. And I think probably the plans they have for the ORDOC, they're substantive. They have an idea about what they want to do. It will take years, and it will take a lot of money. But it's gonna be one of those works and proj, and process and, and going on. Some of us probably won't be alive when it's completed. But it, but keeping up with, picking up on what Mr. Stonehouse talked about, the cruise ships coming in, it will be, that ORDOC does capture the imagination. I think we forget that it's here every day. We see it. But it has become, how many photos have been taken of that ORDOC with the sun, the moon, whatever it is? And it is a, it has become a huge asset for the community, and it has really become a symbol. It'll take years. And this is a, a group that's enthusiastic, wants to work hard. And I'm anxious to see, I, I won't see all of it probably, but see some of it. So, and it appears that our road projects, maybe the city manager can give us an update as to how our, all of our roads are coming, but some of the roundabouts are becoming round. And, and there is cement, cement at the end of the tunnel on these, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Just a couple of comments. Matt, the BLP meeting is on the 17th at 5:15. Next, as to Yorma saying, I really enjoy the new website, but just so you know, the last two meetings of tonight aren't even on there, aren't on the Marquette 365. So, what I was trying to remember what our first work session was, I tried to go on there like yesterday, and I couldn't find it. Then I had to go through all of my email to find out what we had tonight. So I get your frustration because it is a little more difficult or it's different to navigate. And I'm, I imagine we all can get used to it, but I was having trouble too. The other thing is, I remember, city manager, that we talked about this personally, about the sidewalk sales, and I can't remember. So could you remind me when you talk about the issue that we had this summer with it? I can't, it's not, it's not sticking in my brain what we said. So, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Plard?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. First of all, it's the city charter that manages public comment and manages the meeting. City charter will tell you exactly what's allowed in public comment and what isn't allowed in public comment. I, for one, as a member of the city commission, will never allow anyone to come up for public comment and make unfounded and, and just actually frivolous accusations of criminal activity of a commissioner or a member of the Board of Light and Power or any other employee of the city of Marquette. If you want to make criminal charges, you need to see the district attorney. Also, if you request time to speak on a particular subject, the charter says you speak on that subject. That's that. If you want to speak during public comment on other subjects as far as city business is concerned, then you do have that right, and I honor that right every meeting. But city, public comment is not for grandstanding in front of the TV cameras. It's not for bringing up a whole bunch of stuff that just is absolutely useless. But there are people who come up and insist that that's what they do during public comment anyway. All right? If you're gonna do that, that's fine. You can do that. But again, if you make an unfounded criminal charge at public comment, you will have, you will get a point of order. If you make a specific request on a particular subject at public comment and you come up If you make a specific request on a particular subject at public comment, and you come up and get off of that subject, yes, I will call a point of order. Whether you think I'm running the meeting or not, doesn't matter. Public comment, specific, it's in the charter, it's specific about conduct for public comment. Now, that being said, I want to thank Mr. Luttenberger for his comments about the dark skies. Those are the kinds of things I like to see during public comment, and went out and took a look at it, found out what it works. I just want to point out to you, Mr. Luttenberger, that we don't set the times, we just agreed with the Astronomical Society and the times that they wanted. So I would urge you to get with them to make a change. It was their request that they, that we approve the use of Prescott Island Park. So I'd ask you to get with them, and-
I'm sorry, I feel very uncomfortable with the public comment to citizens sitting in the public. Thank you, though.
Oh, okay. And if, and if the, our Astronomical Society comes to us for a change, I'm, I'm sure we would approve it. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't go to the Kaufman area to take a look, certainly. Also, one more thing I want to mention about public comment. Just because somebody comes up for public comment and says something is city business does not mean it's city business. Suicide awareness, I've been involved directly with suicide prevention in the last 20 years of my career with the Department of Corrections. Suicide awareness and prevention is not city business. That's business for somebody else. I've spoken to the police department many times over the years, and no one has ever told me that their morale is lowered because we didn't address suicide prevention. If you take a look at police policies, police policies are quite clear and quite complete on suicide prevention of their members, and that includes all other city departments. So that is not a city business, a city issue, in my opinion personally, and should not be addressed by the city commission. That being also said, I want to reiterate what Mayor Pro Tem Baldini said, the static display is coming up. Really urge you to take advantage of that if it doesn't rain this weekend, and I'm afraid that it may. Weather looks like it's going to be kind of bad again, so I'm sure the fire department will do what they can, but should be a lot of fun. The kids like it. It is fire prevention month here in October, and I urge you, if you don't have kids coming home from school, to at least look at coming up with an escape plan and practicing it within your household, even if it's just with yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, we did have a work session, as was mentioned by the other commissioners. It was with the BOT Eco, and I just want to mention again, this is a group that's really got some nice plans for the ORDOC. They're an organized group, they're a determined group, and, and they got a good game plan. They are working, trying to get the regulations to fit what they're trying to do. They're trying to obtain grants for the money. They do not, this is not going to cost the city a penny. They hope to fund it all. Among the many things they're going to do, the first thing they want to do is just, you know, put an entrance out to the ORDOC, and then have a walkway around it, a promenade, if you want to call it that. But I think it'd be nice to have, if they can succeed at doing this, this is really a long-term plan, but just make it so they can be accessed by tourists and residents. So, I wish them luck. I hope they continue with what they're doing. The other thing is, Mr. Verato, you've been telling me how incompetent I've been for the last six years, and I, I can take that, but the thing is, I've only been on the commission for four. So, I, I would advise you to go home and get out your math book and start again on it, because you, you obviously can't count, so. City manager, anything?
Well, at the beginning of the commissioner comments, I only had one thing. Now I have about five. Sidewalk sales. We have no ordinance governing sidewalk sales, so the DDA created a permit process, exclusive to the DDA, where Wednesday through Saturday, if you applied through the DDA, you could put up a sidewalk sale. It was kind of an interim solution to, to a problem that we did not have an ordinance to address. The sales are supposed to be set up in such a way that are, comply with ADA regulations, safety aspects for pedestrians, all those kind of things. But like many things in life, people, you give them an inch, they take a mile, and people will then start to expand on the, on the freedom that they have. And then it becomes a matter of enforcement. I mean, there's no ordinance, it's a, it's a permit through the DDA, so it's a matter of do we have the ability to enforce the temporary resolution that we thought we were graciously offering people? So, I can tell you that the DDA has had internal discussions about approaching the city, or at least working with the city on creating an ordinance, it's just hasn't gotten that far yet. Marquette 365, I'm not oblivious to the fact that it has some drawbacks. As a matter of fact, for the last week or so, I've been examining that situation to see if it does in fact meet the requirements or expectations that we had anticipated when we first decided to sponsor that, that program. We are in the second year of a three-year agreement with them to fund the program. I don't know if we've made the second-year payment or not, but I know we haven't made the third. And the agreement calls for us to examine it at every stage, at every yearly stage, to see if it in fact is doing what we thought it would do. I'm aware that it does not handle the, the meeting schedule very well. Internally, we're discussing whether we should abandon that as a method for our meeting schedules and just use some other method while still supporting the Marquette 365 as a community event, public art kind of calendar, as opposed to a meeting schedule. It, we are having those discussions to see if it will continue. Construction is going very well. I think as you can see as you drive around town, the blacktop is, is getting laid, the concrete is, is setting. The roundabout at Sugarloaf and Wright Street is 99% complete. The roundabout at Lincoln and Wright is probably 50% complete. Prescott Island Fair is shut down this week to move towards completion. The bypasses are on schedule to be completed by the end of this month, I believe. The original plan was for around 10:15, October 15th, but we've had, had to extend that a little bit to meet the timeline, but every indication we have is that they'll be done and done soon. Lastly, I have community office hours tomorrow. Today is Tuesday. I have office, office hours tomorrow, Wednesday at 10 o'clock, Peter White Public Library. That's it.
Thank you. We are adjourned.